Hi, I'm Doug Dougherty, President of Hamilton Flourishing, and we're so glad you've joined us today. Today, we're continuing our conversations with candidates for the City Council of Chattanooga and for Mayor. Today, we're delighted to have Alan Holman. Alan is a candidate for District 5. And Mr. Holman, we're delighted to have you here, sir.
Delighted to be here, thank you much.
Tell us a little bit about yourself. Where are you born? Where did you come from? When did you come to this area?
Well, I'm originally from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. I was raised there, and I had a very interesting childhood. I was in Chattanooga for about 12 years. I left Philadelphia, in fact, I quit school. And I moved away from Philadelphia to go into the military. I enlisted into the United States Marine Corps to avoid the gang draft that was going on in Philadelphia back in the early 70s. So I left there, and then after my discharge from the military, I moved to California and sought a career in acting, which didn't pan out at that time. So I left and wound up going to Oklahoma, and I started selling insurance. And I've lived in 12 states, but being in Chattanooga, I decided to settle down, buy a home, and with my lovely wife, and we've been married for going on 20 years.
Wow. Now, tell me this. What do you do for a living now?
I'm a pastor. I pastor two churches, and I'm also a professional genealogist.
Professional genealogist?
Yes, sir.
What is the genealogy?
I study the roots of people, like ancestry. I help find ancestors for people. I built their family trees. I helped them organize their family reunions. I also helped to find grave sites of their loved ones.
Now, you say you're a pastor. Can I ask you what denomination that is?
I'm an African Methodist Episcopal pastor. The acronym is AME.
AME, all right.
Yes, sir.
And what are some of your favorite hobbies? What do you like to do in your spare time?
Basically, research, study history. And my genealogy takes up a lot of the time that I, you know, all of my leisure time. Yeah. I enjoy doing that.
That's great. All right, now, tell us about your district, District 5. A little more detail so people who are watching will know whether or not they're in your district. Can you sort of broadly define it?
Well, let's say the 58 Highway area, start where you would, at the north side of 58, well, I guess it'd be northeast side, from Champion Road, come all the way down, pass 153, and you go down like you're going toward Campbell Road. When you get to New York Avenue, you make a left, and you have all of that area, you're covering the Bonnie Oaks area as well.
Hey, Bonnie Oaks.
And you go straight down Tony Boulevard, Tony Boulevard, to Wilcox. And you make a left, and you go out that way to get to Jersey Pike. And you come back up Jersey Pike, and you have all of that area there as well.
And I've got noted here, you've got Eastgate, Woodmore, Dalewood.
Yes, sir.
Precincts, Kingsport, 123, Lake Hills, and Bonnie Oaks. I'm not familiar with what Kingsport, 123 are, but anyway, if you're watching, that's the general area. Eastgate, Woodmore, Dalewood, Bonnie Oaks, Lake Hills, Kingsport, 123. Those are the precincts in District 5. Mr. Holman, why do you believe you would make a good District 5 representative?
Well, I believe in, in my pastoral experience for, in fact, I've been pastoring 44 years, different churches, and building relationships within the churches and within the families and the communities that the churches are in. And I believe in building relationships, and if you build relationships, you can develop your community. That's why I believe that neighbors should know their other neighbors. That deals with a lot of the policing situation, the crime situation. You can deal with those by having a relationship, not only with your neighbors, but having a relationship with law enforcement, having relationships with your elected officials, and you build a rapport.
Great. Now, what has prepared you for this kind of work? How would you say you're prepared for working in a conciliar body, a city council, working with others, and then providing a leadership for our whole city? Because you're not just representing that, you're part of the whole community. And then you have your own constituents in District 5. So what's prepared you for that kind of work?
Well, I attribute to a lot of it to my ministry. You know, I go back to the relationship situation where I listen to people, I listen to their pain, I empathize with them, and I address the issues that mostly concern them. And I feel that even though, even though we have several different issues in our society, if I listen to the people and hear what they have to say, and take their advice, because I would be their elected official.
Now, let me ask you this. This is a kind of a broad question, but what do you regard as one or more of your signal achievements in your life? What have you done that you're really proud of?
Mentoring young people.
Really?
I've mentored, in fact, in one of my churches, we mentor about 30 children, and we develop relationships with the children and the parents, and we help them become cohesive with their family. You know, because I think family is...
Is that here in Chattanooga?
Yes, sir. Family is the strength of our society.
Yeah.
And if you can bond families together and get relationships, just like when family members fall apart, a lot of times you find family members that haven't spoken to each other for a long time. If we can mend those relationships, it would help build not only the family, but build the community.
That's impressive. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you kind of a philosophical question. What do you think is the proper role of city government?
It goes back to the constituents, the residents. You want to make sure that the residents are being treated fairly. You're making sure that we're dealing with the infrastructure, we're dealing with policing, we're dealing with crime reduction, we're dealing with affordable housing. There are several issues that has to be addressed, and a lot of times, people go too far to the right or too far to the left, and they deal with one particular issue and say, well, I'm going to vote because of that issue. When a lot of times, well, let me put it like this. A lot of times, we say that we want to enforce certain rights, and some rights will violate rights of somebody else. You know, so we have to be very careful and learn how to empathize with people. You can't please everybody, but for the most part, you find out what the majority of your constituents need and want.
Tell me this. What are the top three to five issues for you in this election? What are your top, what kind of gets you going?
Well, in the District 5 area, I want to help the small businesses, you know, like right now with this COVID-19, it's caused a major issue economically. Help the small businesses, the local businesses, and that's another thing. We need to make sure that we patronize our local businesses and build up our local economy. Also, our infrastructure, our roads, and not only the roads and the streets, but we look at, there's a lot of rubbish around the areas that need to be cleaned off, you know. You have, because when you have a lot of rubbish like that, it can cause a lot of rodents.
So infrastructure is number two, roads, what's number three you got to think of?
Crime is, crime is one, is a big issue across our city, the violence, you know, and I think there's a way to fix that situation. When we talk about policing, I think a lot of times, if we can, if the police department can assign the police officers in the community where they live, it will make it a lot easier and let them develop relationships with the community. And that way, people don't have to feel intimidated, or the police officers don't have to feel intimidated when they go to various communities.
Okay. What's your actual...
And the crime situation, a lot of the crime that's being committed are not committed by those residents of that area. It's people that come in from the outside of those areas that commit these crimes. Gun violence, you know, people have asked questions about the Second Amendment right. I believe that we should have the right to be, to bear arms, but by the same token, I don't think we need assault weapons. You know, if a person wants to hunt, and they want a, they used to say a .306 or whatever, if they want a weapon to hunt with, that's fine, you know, and I don't see a problem with setting guidelines like you have to get a background check. I don't have a problem with background check, because if you don't have anything negative in your background, what's the problem? You know, why not allow people to get, why not allow them to get a background check on you and say, okay, I am a citizen, a law-abiding citizen, I want to purchase a firearm, either for the protection of my home, or the protection of myself, or to go hunting. There's nothing wrong with that.
Okay. You have a fifth, or did you repass it?
I thought I covered it. Well, affordable housing.
Oh, affordable housing, okay.
Yes, let me deal with that. One of the things in reference to affordable housing, I'd like to make sure that we train people and teach people how they can become homeowners as opposed to home renters, you know.
That's good.
It's good, because if you're a homeowner, you're spending all of that money, and you're investing it in your home. And I would like to make sure that everybody, not only in my district, but in the city, has the opportunity to own their own home and work with them. For example, if education is an issue, you know, everybody's not college material. You know, some people may do better with a trade. So I would also work with, and I know it's a county entity, but I would work with the Board of Education to see if there's a way that we can re-implement those programs in the schools, like shop, and like woodshop, and metal shop, and so on and so forth, to give these young men and women an opportunity to learn a trade, so they will be viable to our community.
Good.
And that would help reduce crime as well, because you're giving these people other things to do.
Now, we may have covered it, but the next question, just to be sure, what will be your priorities if elected? What'll be your, I mean, when you get there in the first meeting, and they say, what are you interested in? What are you going to say?
Building relationships. I stick with that.
Now, getting down to some more practical questions, do you support some kind of, or any kind of tax increase? If so, what?
Well, as they say in the legal system, it's a case-by-case situation. I would first look at the current budget and see how the money's being allocated. And then I would also communicate, again, with my constituents and find out what's feasible economically in our district. Because a lot of times, there are funds there, but they're misappropriated, or misallocated, I should say.
Good, okay. What can the city do? Talking to Alan Holman, who's a candidate for District 5 City Council, Chattanooga, what can the city do, Alan, to continue to see our economy grow and grow more jobs for the folks around here?
Well, it goes back to training. If we go back to training our young people, and there are so many, for example, there are veterans that have come back from Iraq and different places, they can't find jobs. You know, not only the disabled veterans, but I'm talking about those that are not disabled. They can't find, find jobs. Develop situations where there's a job available for them. They have certain careers that they've developed in the military. Let them be able to utilize their gifts and that. Mentor some more of these, mentor these young people. Go into our schools and communicate with the young people. When I talk about young people, I'm talking about like elementary school kids and start molding them. And a lot of times, we'll ask a young person, what would you like to be when you grow up? And that's when the parents and the mentors and the leadership of their churches and their communities should say, okay, I'm going to help you get to that point. And I know their goals may change later on as they get older, but we have to help develop their goals.
Let me move on to the next question. Do you believe the present transportation philosophy in Chattanooga, which would be Carter, is a good one? Would you support a more robust public transportation system, especially for your district?
Well, I've done some Ubering and lifting, and it has worked out pretty well. I used to drive cab in various cities. I haven't driven cab here. You know, if people can get around, Carter, I don't have a problem with Carter from what I understand. I've never ridden Carter, but maybe they can expand their hours, maybe they can expand their availability, because I understand that there were some people that were on probation that had to go meet with their probation office, and they could not get to that area by Carter.
How is this, we haven't gotten to this question, but I'm going to ask you a little bit. How's the shopping, grocery shopping in your thing? Is that a food, probably 58's not a food desert, but what about the rest?
Well, I think we should have more shopping availability in other areas in District 5. There's nothing on Wilcox, there's nothing when you get past 58 Highway, in that whole area. You know, you have to go all the way out to Hamilton Place, or you have to go all the way out, 153, or you have to go way down on Brainerd. And I think we need to have more businesses in those areas.
All right.
And I think we can bring more businesses in.
Let me ask you this question. I'd be real curious to this. What do you think is the proper role of government in the life of families? Do you have a philosophy that sort of guides you on this area?
Well, government is really supposed to make sure that people are comfortable living, comfortably living. You know, I don't think government should have a place in a person making their personal family-like decisions, you know, and this is a borderline situation. I know there's a big controversy about pro-life or pro-choice, and I think we go from one extreme to the other. It goes back to a case-by-case situation. Like, I'm a pastor, and I teach about pro-life and what have you. I say, but I don't think it's the government's responsibility to tell a person what they should do with their bodies. I really, I really don't. So you're asking me, am I pro-life or pro-choice? What if I say I'm both? Because I believe, because how can you say that you're pro-life, you know, and then you believe in capital punishment? Personally, I don't believe in capital punishment. You know, and I'll even mention this. For example, the death penalty, I don't really think the criminal learns anything. You've taken their life. And some people, especially when they're deranged to where they would kill somebody, they don't care about dying, so no one's learned anything from that. Rehabilitate them and put them in a system to where they will have some kind of remorse, you know? That's, that's where, where that stands as far as that goes.
Okay. Let's, let me move on to these questions. Be interested in your response to this. Do you see a role for churches, synagogues, and mosques, and temples, and local government programs? I'm not talking about funding things, but do you see a cooperation with the faith community to help, to work with people and stuff like that?
I think the faith, the faith community is a very viable part of our society. I think they should have a strong visibility in our community. They should have a strong presence, that's what I want to say. They should have a strong presence in our community and have a relationship with people. Now, everybody doesn't believe in what we would say the higher power, but everybody is looking for something in which to believe, to help them make it from one phase to another in their society. Just like this COVID-19, not only are we dealing with the medical part of it or the economic part of it, but there's a mental aspect that people need to be counseled, you know, because they're hurt. You know, they lose their loved ones because of COVID-19, because of racial injustice, because of police injustice. All of these kinds of things affect families, and the faith community can step in and say, okay, we've got your back. We're going to, we're going to continue to...
I don't think we've had a pastor on the city government. I'm trying to think when we had the last pastor. I know we had a county commissioner, we had...
Yeah, Dr. McDaniel.
Dr. McDaniel, for a long time, but I can't think of anybody on the city council. Yeah, I think he'd be a good voice there. That's good. What's your perspective on the role of government in the arts, especially public arts? Do you have an opinion on that?
I would, I would support it, because the arts, we have, let me put it like this. In our church, we have developed what we call a Ministry of Performing Arts, where the young people, they get to exercise their gifts, whether it's acting, whether it's dance, whether it's music. And I think it's a strong nurturing ministry throughout the city.
Okay. Do you support the present administration of Hamilton County Public Schools?
Well, that's a very broad question.
Well, do you think they're doing a good job or not doing a good job?
I think they can do more.
Do more, okay. Because the city council really doesn't have a lot to do with, they don't have anything to do with the budget, and they don't have anything to do with the administration of the county school system. I mean, their, the city used to have their own school system, but not anymore.
Correct, but I also, I go back to my, my foundation, developing relationship, because all of those members of the school board, they have relationships with people in their area. And our constituents, we have the same constituents.
Well, one thing you all have that I'd encourage everybody who I speak with, is you've got to bully public. So you get elected, you're elevated up there, and you have a way to speak to the community. You also can convene people around, around you. So if you want to talk about an issue or something that's important to the community, you can rally support, you can bring experts in, you can do that, because you have the power of convening a group. I encourage people that. Let me ask you this, sir, you may have already covered. Are you pro-life or are you pro-choice? Explain it if you'd like to.
Well, I had said previously, I don't think the government should have a voice into what a person does with their body.
Okay.
Now, as a pastor, I have my own personal beliefs as relates to pro-life, but by the same token, my job as a pastor is to guide them as to what is believed spiritually. But I, I think that when government gets involved, I think they're getting out of their lane.
Okay. Let me ask you this question. How do you respond to, there's been a lot of, earlier in the spring, or last year, we had 45 days of protests downtown. Black Lives Matters were very much involved in it, and the phrase systemic white racism came out a lot with them, and going back to other organizations like Unifi Ed over the years. What's your response to the notion of systemic white racism? I assume your, your district, I assume, has people of different colors in it.
Oh, sure, sure. I'm very strong in supporting equality across the races. There's been systemic racism for years, for years. I grew up, as I said previously, I grew up in Philadelphia, and Philadelphia, I grew up in an integrated school system, you know, so when I came to the South, I was really appalled to see what I've been reading about, you know, and my problem is the ignorance of people not accepting the fact that it does exist. And the only way to resolve a problem is, first of all, acknowledge the fact that there is a problem. You know, as far as the Black Lives Matter, people can go to a certain point to where their anger begins to explode, because you get tired of seeing the same old thing over and over and over again. And why does the system allow it to continue? You know, for example, you have police brutality across the country. You know, it's, you, you have to really figure out who you're hiring, and what kind of training are you doing? How are you making sure that the person that you're hiring is not going to be trigger-happy or not going to be intimidated because of a certain race? You know, so all of that has, has to be addressed.
This is a tough question. How do you understand the concept of equity, working in your role as an elected leader? Working in your role as elected leader, how do you understand the word equity?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, it's a term that gets caught...
It's a broad...
It gets tossed around a lot and used by different people in different ways, and people understand it. What do you think of when I say equity?
Making sure that everybody is getting their fair share in various entities of our, of our society.
Okay.
You know, whether it be housing, whether it be jobs, whether it be relationships with their community, with their elected officials, all of that is a part of the same.
All right. Let me ask you this. Do you have a point on, it used to be called conservation, or the environment, or global warming, or any of those things? Do you have a point of view on that, strong point of view?
I think it's a serious issue.
Yeah.
When you look at the situation that's going on in the Far West, in California, and it's bleeding over toward the East, it's just a matter of time. I think global warming has to be addressed.
Okay. Do you believe the previous city administration, or will be the previous city administration, and the current county and state administration has handled the response to COVID-19 well, or could it have been improved upon? In other words, did Mayor Burke and Mayor Cuffinger, Governor Lee, do you think they've done a good job, or do you not think they, or it could have been improved upon?
I think the city government has done a pretty decent job, considering what they were allowed to do. Because, you know, we're, we're governing so much, when you're talking about the COVID-19, when you're dealing with the federal government mandates, or not mandating, or the state, or the governor mandating or not mandating. When you're dealing with health issues, well, let me, let me, let me say it like this. People get upset because of the mandating of wearing masks. And that's to save lives, not only for those who are wearing the masks, but those who are in the environment of those wearing masks. Why are we so upset when they mandated wearing seat belts? And I have to wear a seat belt to make sure I save my life? So if I have to wear a seat belt to save my life, and that's mandated, well, I'm going to get fined, you know, then why can't they mandate wearing a mask to not only save my life, but to save others?
Okay. What's your position on the Second Amendment?
Well, like I had said previously, I believe that we should have the right to bear arms. I don't have a problem with the background checks. I don't know why people are intimidated by background checks. I don't know why people are intimidated by background checks. You wanna make sure that the firearms are in the right hands of the people and not in the wrong hands. Some people wonder, well, should you be able to buy a firearm at a gun show without a background check? No, I don't think you should be able to.
Okay. You believe the city is doing enough to help the poor, disabled, or mentally ill? You have a philosophy of your, of the role of government in such things? Talking about the poor, the disabled, mentally ill?
I think that's...
People who really can't help themselves in their present circumstances?
I think we are our brother's keeper. I think we are...
Is that a personal thing or is that a governmental thing?
Well, I would say it should be both. Because we have, we have the Constitution, which is supposed to reach out for the concerns of our citizens in, in our country. Same thing with our state government, same thing with our local government. I think we should be there to assist them and to help them. And then, but we also need to make sure that we don't, how should I say? We don't overdo it with, with those who are not. You know, there are so many people that abuse the system as well. So, we, we have to make sure we don't, don't do that.
Okay. Next question. How will you approach the problems of shootings in Chattanooga? They scare a lot of people.
Okay, let me go back to my original word, relationship. Our neighbors, our neighbors should know everybody. They should know each other. You know, like if you have 20 houses on a, on a street, I think everyone in those 20 houses should know each other. The Neighborhood Watch is a very viable, very viable resource. The shootings, it's gun control. You know. I know it's a very sensitive situation, but gun control, make sure, there's some cities that have a gun buyback. Or you can come in and turn in your gun, no questions asked, and get the guns off the street. You know, put more cameras up in our city. And not necessarily for traffic purposes, but for the safety of the communities. You know, a lot of residents, they have to buy security systems for their home. You know, I think we can do something citywide and not just to monitor traffic, whether somebody's speeding or whether somebody's going through a light, but to make sure that the crime is curtailed.
Next question. How will you approach the problem of homelessness in Chattanooga?
Wow, that's a big one. Personally, I would, I would, and I have been, but for example, I would go down to the, the strong homeless area and communicate with some of those homeless people. A lot of those homeless people just had a bad, a bad experience. And if you find out, get to the root of the problem, a lot of them are educated. Just like if you find some homeless people that don't have an education, work on trying to get them some education. They don't have ID. Okay, let's work on getting them residents to where they can get mail, to whether they can get ID. All these kinds of things can, can be done. You know, it's not just feeding them once or twice a year, Thanksgiving and Christmas, or holidays. They have to eat every day. You know, and it's a lot of, there are a lot of misfortunes that cause them to become homeless. A lot of them are addicted either to alcohol or some other substance, you know. Let's deal with the issues that's causing them to be homeless. Not just trying to find them a place to stay, but put them in a position to where they can, they can acquire.
What will you do, Alan, about the food desert issue in Chattanooga? The notion that there isn't healthy food nearby in a lot of Chattanooga. I mean, each Chattanooga just got their first grocery store in, I'm guessing, 20, 30 years.
I saw that.
I applaud them for that. But there's lots of areas of town where there's not good public transportation. There aren't any grocery stores. You can't get fresh vegetables, so you go to the stop-and-go with the dollar store and you get whatever they've got, which is expensive and you're not gonna get fresh vegetables and things like that. They call those food deserts. What do you, what's your thought about that?
That's, that's an issue that has to be addressed. Through our government. Part of the funds that's, that should be allocated toward that effort. Business ownership, helping people develop their businesses. Making sure that we get grocery stores in the various areas that, that we say are the food desert.
We're running out of time, but let me ask you three more questions. What will you advocate for the need for affordable housing within the city? Do you have any specific policy ideas?
Not specifically, but I, I would address the affordable housing issue. I noticed that there are a lot of homes being built, but yet, the cost of those homes are exorbitant. Yes, sir. So, I think a lot of that has to do with the contracting. You know, I would advocate getting local contractors, which would be less expensive. And you would also help your own community.
Oh, second to last question. Have you ever mentored a younger person? Would you like to if elected?
Oh, absolutely. I said, you know, we mentor about 30 children in our church.
Yeah, I think it'd be great if everybody on the council had one or two young people that they were mentoring into the life of government and, and public leadership. I think it'd be really great.
Absolutely, I would love to do that. And not just in my church, but that's, that's my example.
Yeah, I can hear you. And do you, what is your current working relationship with other people running for both mayor and city council? Are you, do you, are you pals? I don't mean that in a bad way. Do you have a relationship with the other people that are running? A working relationship, formal working relationship?
Well, I've worked with one of the candidates in the Fifth District, one of the candidates. I didn't know that particular candidate was running, had decided to run when I decided to run. So, and we haven't communicated since. But I have no qualms, and I tell people all the time, I'm not running against the candidate. I'm running for the position. And one of the mayor candidates are, are very good friends.
Okay. We've been talking with Alan Holman, running for District Five City Council in Chattanooga in the March 2 election. Alan can be reached at his email address, which is on the screen, or in his cell phone number,